All right, we're going to continue with our board session. We are starting our regular session and please join us to do our flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands the one nation under our umbrella and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first item on the agenda is our recognition. And we have three recognitions or proclamations that I wanted to read for us today. The first one is in honor of our Classified Employee Appreciation Week. In honor of Classified Employee Appreciation Week, March 2nd through the 6th, the Board of Directors would like to publicly thank over the 1,200 men and women who fill the critical roles of educational assistants, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, maintenance technicians, custodians, office support staff, and many others for the Hillsborough School District. Your often unsung work behind the scenes, support teachers in delivering instruction, diverse talents, and tireless dedication to our community students is invaluable. Your contributions to the Hillsborough School Districts are valued and appreciated. Please join me in thanking our classified staff and recognizing them during Classified Employee Appreciation Week. And I think it goes without saying that especially right now, we are truly, truly thankful to have our classified employees on the front lines of all this work. Our next appreciation is for proclamation, is for our Women's History Month. The Hillsborough School District celebrates women of every race, class, and ethnic background that have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our community in countless reported and unreported ways. The Hillsborough School District honors women that have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of the life of our community by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and out of the home. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that women have played a unique role throughout the history of our community by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of the community and school district. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that women of every race, class, and ethnic backgrounds served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. Women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which create a more fair and just society for all. The Board of Education and the Hillsborough School Districts do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 to be Women's History Month. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of women that develop to the development and prosperity of our community. Our next proclamation is regarding community involvement. The Hillsborough School District recognizes that parent and community involvement is a significant factor in the success of schools. By becoming a volunteer, parents and community members are providing an invaluable contribution to the education of our students. The Hillsborough School District appreciates the service of dedicated volunteers to assist professional educators by offering their time, encouragement, and meaningful contact with students. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that volunteers are called upon to assist teachers and staff with the day-to-day activities involved in providing a balanced education for our students and are an important part of a team that strives to ensure that each one of our students succeeds. The Hillsborough School District thanks our volunteers for spending innumerable hours serving our schools as chaperones, mentors, after-school tutors, club leaders, booster club members, PTA and PTO members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, athletic coaches, and countless other ways. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School Districts do hereby proclaim the week of April 20 to the 24th, 2020 to be Volunteer Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of volunteers to the development and prosperity of our community. Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is our approval of the agenda. I am looking for a motion. I move to approve the agenda.
Second, is your dear the only board member in the room?
Yes, she is. Thank you. So it has been moved by your dear and seconded by Martin. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. And just so we're aware, there's a little bit of a delay with our phone, our group hangouts, which the majority of our board members are joining us on Monday. So our next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. I am looking for a motion.
Did you want to do audience time?
Oh, sorry, I was almost, yes. Let's do audience times because we did get some audience comments beforehand. So let me just read our public statement. Public participation in board meetings is governed by policy BD DH. Visitors who wish to speak before the board must complete a "intend to speak" card, which today is available online via emailing our executive assistants, Rose Roman. Comments concerning a public agenda items are limited to a designated place on the agenda. Unless otherwise authorized by the board, comments about non-agenda items will be heard at this time. Speakers should state their name and if speaking for an organization, the name or voice of the organization. A spokesperson should be designated to represent a group with a common purpose. Three minutes will be allowed for an individual speaker and five minutes will be allowed for a visitor who is speaking on behalf of a group. Speakers may offer objective criticism of district operations and programs, but in public sessions, the board will not hear comments regarding any individual district staff member. Combinations involving staff members should be sent to the superintendent. Channels for the boards are DOL, legitimate complaints involving individuals include board policy KL, public complaints. If appropriate, the board chair will connect the visitor with an administrator to receive comments regarding personnel. Any hearing conducted before the board regarding personnel shall take place in an executive session. The board thanks all visitors for their presence and input and appreciates the input of community members. We do have some audience comments, which I will have that share with us.
Okay, thank you. So we have had some comments come in that are more or less in the format of what might be shared with you during the context of a board meeting. And then we have some other questions that have come in, which just given the times that we're in, I think probably makes some sense to try to at least give an initial response to. So first, I will read the comments as though you were having somebody right here with you telling you their own thoughts. So this first comment is from Kelly Beal, and her statement reads, "The CDC has issued guidance on mitigation strategies for communities like ours with local COVID-19 transmission." She provides a web link. "As part of that guidance, Appendix A lists medication conditions that put individuals into a quote-unquote 'high-risk' category. My family, like many other families in the district, has both students and parents that fall into that high-risk category. We are being advised to shelter in our homes, and we are doing so. We were told in the week prior to school closures that online learning opportunities would not be made available to our students at that time. It is clear from medical studies that people are capable of asymptomatic transmission of COVID-19. In other words, the basic screening procedures of checking for fever and cough are not sufficient to keep high-risk students away from those who could be shedding viruses. Should in-person classes resume at some point during the school year, what provisions will be made to allow high-risk students to safely continue their education? Will online learning or correspondence coursework be made available to them as a choice?" All right, the second one that came in is from Priscilla Gomora. Dear board members, my name is Priscilla Gomora. I'm the mother of three former HSD Special Education students. They are being homeschooled now. I want to ask you today to review and implement better policies in the HSD Special Education Program. Policies that ensure that every special education student receives equity and proper supports, regardless of their race, family income, or achievement. HSD can offer the proper services for special education students, but a lot of times, parents of color don't know about those services, and HSD won't mention them or retaliate against staff that would. Policies that protect special education teachers and staff that propose services that can potentially help special education students without retaliation. Policies that mandate special education teachers and staff to suggest proper supports to all students according to the best of their knowledge. Policies that protect special education teachers, aides, and staff that report anomalies or IEPs not being followed without retaliation. Policies that mandate the Special Education Advisory Committee to be parent-led. Policies that ensure the safety of special education students severely affected by their disability in self-contained classrooms, as many of them cannot talk or communicate in any way. Policies against seclusion and restraint of special education students. Policies that ensure parents their equally valuable participation in their child's IDP team. Policies that mandate proper training of special education staff to meet the individual needs of students. Many HSD parent professionals and aides are undertrained and escalating challenging behaviors in our children. My children are homeschooled now because they are not receiving proper support and safety at HSD schools, and my children are not the only ones being homeschooled for the same reasons. There are many families like ours." And the third comment, let me just pull it up here, is from Harriet Schmidt. "High school education during the virus. Please, can you make a more rigorous and thorough plan for maintaining our high schoolers' education during the closure? I expect the situation to last the rest of the school year, and I hope that you have a plan for that. Our kids will be at a disadvantage for the rest of their lives if they miss a half a year out of high school. Don't just push them through and sign them off, but please actually provide what they will need for life. Thank you." And I would say that that echoes some common questions that we are getting, plans for high schoolers, plans for seniors in particular, end-of-year plans, and my guess there is that it means kind of, are we planning to extend it to the summer? Issues of childcare, and specifically around providing care for the children of safety workers, healthcare workers, things like that. Distance learning and tips for how parents can help their students. And then the meal program might just bear a repetition from our work session earlier in case anyone missed that. So I could go back down them one by one, just the questions. I might get rid of-
I took a list here. Let me, let me take a shot at answering a number of these questions and just use this as an opportunity to get some information out regarding where we are right now. Erica and I are going to be sending out a video later this evening that will mimic some of the comments that I'm going to make here right now. But just as some initial information, this will not be specific enough to answer all of the questions that we just posed there, but let me just give you some insight into additional information that's coming down the road and have a little bit of a response here. As you know, just late this afternoon, we found out that April 28th would be the date at which the closure would be extended through. Now, with that in mind, we have, we created the opportunity for students to participate and to continue to receive lunch and breakfast on some days. And we have information on our website that would indicate where students can go to get lunches on a day-to-day basis. I do know that after spring break, we are going to continue to increase the number of sites where that distribution is taking place, and we will be moving to locations throughout the community that would allow us to get to more students that are in need of those lunches. There'll be more information coming out of that, that will also be on our website. We'll also continue to push that information out via the robocall, the similar to the robocall that was made earlier this morning, as well as our social media channels. So more to come on that. We do have, we do have schools that have food pantries, and those food pantries continue to be open. The principals have sent that information out via their, their own school communities and do know that, to be looking for those, those pieces of information from the specific schools that do have those food pantries. Want to talk a little bit about the concept of distance learning. We currently have, like, we're, we're working during this, during this week, sort of these last couple of days, we're working to provide supplementary materials for our students. That information will be available to students on the week after spring break. We have to keep in mind that whenever we, whenever we start down this road, whether it be online learning or supplementary materials or additional learning opportunities for our students, that not all of our students have access to online materials. We have, we have, we're predicting approximately 20% of our students do not have connectivity at their homes. And so when we provide a learning opportunity that is only online, we're missing a large portion of our students. So with that in mind, we are, we are working on some distance learning plans, and some of that will be online. For students that don't have access to online, we are working on putting packets together that can be picked up throughout the community, and we will have the option of mailing those to students as well. The other thing that I should mention is that the entire Washington County School District, all of the school districts in Washington County are working on a joint plan to provide distance learning for students as well. It doesn't make a lot of sense for district to district to create their own system here where we believe that we have more power than the entire county works on this together. So additional information will be coming out on that in the next week or so. We have received some questions regarding what are the instructional hour requirements, and what are credits going to look like? We're working with our high school principals right now, and we believe that there's going to be additional guidance coming from the Oregon Department of Education regarding instructional hours, and there'll be guidance as to what portion of those hours can actually be waived, and what the process for making sure that students have the information and the knowledge necessary to, to continue to move forward. Specifically, we've been getting questions about seniors and is their, is their graduation going to be at risk? And that, that will not be the case. We will work with our staff members to make certain that we have a plan for our seniors and that they are reviewing on a student-by-student case basis what exactly is necessary to make sure that those students are ready to graduate and to move forward. So additional information to come on that as well. We've been asked about graduation ceremonies, and I can tell you that at this point, it is, it's really too early for us to make any comment on that. Right now, the, the school closure is expected to last through April 28th. What has been abundantly clear over these last two weeks is the changing nature of this virus and the response that is required at any given time. So we certainly hope that that will be the case and that we can provide all of those year-end activities that, that families look forward to, and we'll do everything we can to make sure that that is the case. But do know that we're in a, we're in a situation here where we too are responding to new guidelines that seem to be coming out on almost a daily basis at this point. At that point, I'll stop with my comments and just let you know that we will continue to follow the guidelines of Oregon Health Authority, Washington County Public Health, the Oregon Department of Education, as well as the Governor's Office will continue to get information out to you. As soon as we have it, we'll, we'll be fully transparent in all the information that we have, and we'll continue to use the same communication pathways that we have been using and to be as thorough as possible. So with that, I'll, I'll stop with my response and turn it back to Erica.
Yeah, I think that the one additional thing that we mentioned during our board session was also just regarding meal plans and utilizing our bus services or with whatever ways that we can, we are looking at all the options that we have to deliver meals to people and especially our multiple populations. And a combination of either distance learning online or all packages, whatever that we're able to do, we are working and collaborating together to figure out what the best approach is to our district.
Excellent. And I should also mention that the city of Hillsborough continues to be excellent partners. The Chamber of Commerce, we have been problem-solving with those folks, as well as Washington County. All, all of our partners have reached out and offered their assistance, and we have engaged with them on a variety of different topics. So more information to come, but that's what we are at at this moment.
Maybe it's questions on the remote connection?
Go ahead.
Oh no, you can't hear us, how about that? Run a switch.
We can hear you, go ahead and ask a question.
Maybe we ask questions, is this, can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
So I've only saw, seen press, not the actual documentation from the Governor's Office, and I just see the word closures. And can we just clarify that physical structure that we're still expected to do the online or, I know like, our two weeks here is extended spring break, and closed means closed. Between the end of, you know, April 1st and April 28th now, the expectations are not closed means closed, is we're doing online learning, we're going to try to figure things out, right?
I would say that we're, we're going to be participating in distance learning, and that, I think that will be a hybrid model by the time we're finished with that. Remember that we do have a number of students that don't have connectivity, so it needs to be a model that's going to allow for learning to take place.
Right, online was a poor choice of word, distance learning, yes. But the governor is expecting that, which uses the word, "schools are closed," that doesn't mean closed closed.
I can tell you in Washington County that the, that we are operating under the notion that we are going to provide some extension of our learning and some type of hybrid model to continue instruction moving forward, or to continue at least the use of supplementary materials for our students' educational process. So we are operating under that assumption. Again, this information came out, I mean literally just a few minutes before this meeting started, so we will need an opportunity to debrief this tomorrow. We do have a couple of conference calls already scheduled for, there'll be a conference call with the Oregon Department of Education tomorrow, as well as Washington County School Districts. So we'll have additional information available after those meetings tomorrow.
And just to clarify, like, for people who might not know, for us, I think we know, but just to make it clear, while the classrooms are on extended spring break this week, those of you in the admin center are still coming to work every day this week, working hard and trying to figure out what education looks like in this health crisis.
Yeah, this is, this has been an ongoing event, and we, yes, indeed, we have, we have been here nonstop for the last couple of weeks, so absolutely that is the case. Hey, one thing I forgot to mention is the, the notion of childcare. We know that in our communities, there, there are some important people that we need to provide childcare for, and we're currently working with some of our partners to figure out exactly how we're going to try and make ourselves available for this. And that would be our community members who are engaged in healthcare of any kind, our community members who are taking care of seniors or work with senior citizens, our medical staff, our first responders, both fire and police. So we are going to be reaching out, and we've already begun the conversations around having childcare available for those people really on the front line of fighting this pandemic.
Like, this is Jean, I have a question about the childcare. When you say you're working with pre-pensions or that we're working with pre-pensions, who are those pre-pensions that we're working with?
We're currently in conversation with some of our private after-school providers and just at the risk of, you know, I'm not, I'm not ready to name those yet, but we've got some people in our schools that have, that we've been in conversation with today that might be able to provide some childcare services for us, and, and we're still in that conversation. Also had a conversation with the city of Hillsborough earlier today, and we're in conversation with that. So I'm really not ready to share details, and the reason for that is because those details haven't been worked out yet. This is, this is today's work that, that we will be building on.
Okay, so we are going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I am looking for a motion. I move to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, you're looking at the computer, second.
Thank you. So it has been moved by your dear and seconded by Martin. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I did. Erica, this is Martin. It's really, really impossible to hear who's voting. Is it possible we could do a roll call for a bit, so we kind of know who's spoken?
Well, great idea, Martin.
Okay, we will do a roll call. So it has been moved by your dear and seconded by Martin, that we approve the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do a roll call in just a second, let me just write this down.
Erica, this is Jackie.
Yes.
I'm gonna just be honest and say that I can't hear anything. Everybody sounds like the teacher from Charlie Brown. So I don't know if it's me, I tried calling in on my cellphone too, and it didn't, wasn't any better.
Well, I can hear everybody who's been online, I just can't hear anybody in the room very well.
I see. I won't make sure that we move our speaker and microphone, I guess closer to if somebody's talking.
I think the audio source in the room is the computer, yeah, there you go.
Mike and, Mike and Erica, if you guys are willing to open your computers and join the Google Meet, we'll be able to hear you super clearly.
I hope that doesn't produce some nice of feedback.
Give us a minute, Justin is sharing the invite with us.
We're doing longer, it's some filler time. Are we in the vote on the consent agenda, is that the voting now?
Yes.
Should have links in your email.
Okay, thank you.
You send it to me, Justin.
Oh, yeah.
Justin, you just sent it to email, is that correct?
And when you do, you should click on the microphone to mute when you're, well, or unmute if you're talking, yes.
If we leave them open, is that wrong?
Might, well, I mean, the idea is that they can hear you better, so.
It's hard to say if it'll make feedback. If Jordan turns his computer down, you hear us through your computers, I think it would probably be reasonable.
If your computer's volume is up, it might cause a problem, but.
We'll see if we can hear you better.
Yeah, we're getting feedback, this is-
So that's not gonna work.
It would only work if you sort of mute, everybody mutes until, until they need to speak, yeah. Even then, turn your computer's volume down.
Problem is in the house, that was a phaser on the other one.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, if I, if I turn on my mute button down, can you hear me any better?
I would say that we can hear mics for the most part, I can't hear Erica very much at all, so if we're only gonna get one on that side of the room, I'd rather have Erica's than Mike's.
Is this any helpful? Can you hear any better now?
Did Erica join? I don't hear any differently, I mean, Jordan, your computer, as long as Mike and Erica can hear us, your computers need to be putting any audio out, right here?
I think you can hear me better and better. Yeah, I think that we're gonna have a lot of feedback if we try to do it on the Google Hangouts.
If I mute this computer here, you'll get less feedback because it's, that's where it's getting back.
Every time I turn mine on.
It does that, yeah. So every time we mute a mic.
Like, only one person at a time can have their mic on in the same room.
Well, anytime we've had it in different times, we aren't able to.
And probably speakers as well, and one person should really have their computer audio turned up loud. It's the, it's the speakers going into the mic is what's killing us.
Right.
So we're just gonna have to power through right now with what we have and hope that you guys can see me as I'm reading through our list. Okay, so I'm gonna do roll call. Okay, so I'm gonna do roll call. The item that we are voting on is our consent agenda, to approve our consent agenda. Lisa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Adira?
Aye.
An aye and aye. The motion carries. The next item on our agenda is our action items, and we are gonna have our first item under that is accept gifts and donation with Michelle Morrison.
Good evening. Hello. Good evening, directors. As requested, we do have our gifts and donations, over $5,000 for the month of February. We received a donation of $7,000 from West Union Community Club to West Union Elementary School for technology licenses. And this is an opportunity just to acknowledge that out loud and thank the community for their support.
Thank you, Michelle.
To the board of the management, the donation of $7,000 from West Union Community Club to West Union Elementary School for technology license.
Second.
Second. So it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Adira. Is there any discussion? I'm gonna move to roll call for our vote. Lisa?
Aye.
Lisa, aye. Jackie, how do you vote?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Adira?
Aye.
An aye as well. So it has been moved by Martin, seconded by Adira, and this motion passes. Our next item on the agenda is our inter-district transfer with Beth Brecher.
Okay, so. All right, am I on? There we go. So we have our hospital 2747 inter-district transfer process that the board needs to review and approve the number of slots that we are going to open up for next school year for students who currently live out of district, who want to attend Hillsborough School District. And then also a number of spots that we will be willing to release our own students to attend school in other school districts. So this is a provision of that law. There used to be two laws around inter-district transfers, one which was open enrollment that sunsetted two years ago, and so this is the only one remaining. As we have done in years past, we have attempted to go school by school and identify which schools and which grade levels within those schools have the capacity to accept additional students for next school year. So that is the list that you'll see before you, and principals have had a chance to weigh in on this and validate that they feel that they can accommodate this number of students. As you'll notice, if you added up all these numbers, they would go far beyond the 60 slots that I'm recommending that you approve for incoming students for next school year. But we like to provide the maximum flexibility that we can across our entire district for the sake of our families and students who need to attend a school other than their home school. So like I said, 60 slots across the district, up to 10 of those could be kinder spots that we may or may not be able to provide an answer on right away, just because of the nature of kindergarten. We might have to wait until the end of August, but if someone is accepted for a kindergarten slot, we do say that they will be placed somewhere in our district. We just may not be able to guarantee where until August. And then we have proposed that we allow 40 of our current HSD students to be able to attend schools in other districts. And hopefully, all of you can access that draft proposal that was placed in your board meeting materials. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Any questions from the phone or online? All right, with that, this is an action item, so I am looking for a motion.
I move that the board of directors adopt the plan presented for inter-district transfers for the 2020-2021 school year.
Second.
So it has been moved by Lisa and seconded by Adira. Is there any discussion? I will move on to roll call for your vote. Lisa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Adira?
Aye.
And I vote aye. This motion carries. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is to revisit our regular board meeting, and we are going to be convening our meeting for the local contract review board. And our first item is our publicly authorizing emergency procurement of services due to COVID-19. And this is an emergency declaration with Casey Walte.
Good evening. Due to Governor Brown's declaration of a state of emergency to contain the coronavirus, there's an ORS 279B.080 permits the local contract review board to authorize emergency procurement. This is procurement that would allow the district to pay for services directly tied to the emergency. For example, hiring a company to come clean our schools, procurement of supplies that needed in the emergency. This would allow us to immediately obtain those supplies without the means to have to go out for quotes and bids, et cetera, for items under $150,000.
All right, thank you, Casey. And I was just informed we do not have any public testimony regarding this item. So with that, I am looking for a motion.
I move that the board of directors acting in capacity of the local contract review board will be used for emergency procurement of services, which is in needs of the district generated by the emergency declaration.
Second.
I think I heard Sheen second. So it has been moved by Martin and seconded by Sheen. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing no discussion, I will do roll call. Lisa, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jackie?
Aye.
Sheen?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Adira?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. This motion carries. The next item that we have is to approve the use of emergency procurement services to meet the purchasing needs. Is that the same? Sorry, I just had it, I had it duplicated on here, so I just wanted to make sure that we got that. Okay. So we are adjourning our local contract review board, and we are reconvening our regular board meeting. Our next item on the agenda is reports and discussions, and we have our financial report with Michelle Morrison.
Hello again. I just wanted to offer the opportunity of answering the questions you may have regarding our financial report for the month of February. This was reported today. As always, we're very busy in the business office, moving things forward and doing everything we can to support the departments and our instructional partners through this crisis as well. Happy to entertain any questions you may have about the report or our current cash flows.
Any questions online? Okay, good. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is our first read of the language arts adoption with Travis Hyman.
I think we'll try a combination of Google meets. If I mute this microphone, can you guys hear me? We're not gonna try a combination.
Yeah, there's just a speaker turned up very loud in the room that keeps picking everything up. I don't know what speaker it is, but there's a speaker in the room that's turned up loud.
That first slide format, strangely, it should read language arts adoption proposal, not cross down. We would love to have a group of teachers and leaders and community members here to present this with us tonight. And this is the first reading of our language arts adoption proposal, K6. Disappointed that we have to be here in such a small group because there were literally a couple of hundred people who helped us with this process and deserve to be recognized tonight. The purpose of tonight's presentation is to overview, to provide an overview of our process for the board, to make a recommendation from our teachers, which has already gained guidance from the CCAC, to bring that to you here tonight, and then to answer questions over the next few weeks if you have them, hoping that you would approve our proposal on April 14th at the work session. I would like to draw your attention to an executive summary document, which folks have who are here. If you are participating online, you can have this in your board packet, board members. The executive summary is for those who don't want to wait for the recommendation until the end of the presentation. It's right there. And the bottom line is that we would ask for the board to approve $3 million for a combination of materials, assessment tools, online tools, and professional learning and planning time for our teachers, as well as some logistical costs of shipping materials to us in Hillsborough. A hyperlink at the end of the presentation on the second to last slide would allow board members to dive into a website that we've created that shows our entire adoption process. We would post our executive summary and that website on our district website for community members to access, like we have PDF versions of our science and math curriculum adoptions in the past. We've just become a little bit more dynamic with our digital capacity, thanks to Alano Chiliberto, who helped us archive everything that we did for the last couple of years in this process. Is there a clicker? Should I use that keyboard? Oh, thank you. I do want to introduce Francesca Sinapi, who's an executive director of schools, and Arceba Tobar, who is a coordinator of elementary teaching and learning. We have a bigger roster today, including Rebecca Nelson from the CCAC, but we have excused them from participating. Really, Fred and Arceba deserve a ton of recognition for their leadership during this process, and therefore they had to come to the meeting to be celebrated and recognized by you all. We also have Rebecca Nelson participating via video message tonight, which is a surprise we'll get toward the end of the presentation. She recorded herself and her comments as a representative from the CCAC, so that you can hear from them tonight. Again, the executive summary ties it all together with our proposal. HSD values and the guiding principles that our team developed literally two years ago to guide this process, as well as some fast facts that allow you to see how many folks participated, the number of publishers we reviewed, an estimate of how many dollars per student this investment would be. And just take into consideration that some of our students who aren't even born yet will be in kindergarten someday and benefiting from this adoption. So we're really excited about the package that we have assembled for you, and we think it's the best leverage of our dollars for our students into the future. We also have some details on there about the strategic plan and continuous improvement plan for HSD and how this curriculum adoption and the professional learning will help us reach those targets. Pass it to our Seema to do a little storytelling about our process. I think it's really important that the board and community understand how many folks participated in this and our approach to this is important, important.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody for your attention. I think one of the things that really fills me with pride is the passion and the celebration and the dedication of our teachers in the district. And this process actually started in spring of 2018. We conveyed a leadership team that was represented of pre-K to 12th, and we created a task force, different task force teams that gathered research and followed recommendations from the leadership team. And in the summer, our coordinator of curriculum assessment went out and collected feedback from teachers, from classified staff, from principals, and began to gather that feedback. We analyzed it, and in the fall of 2018, the language arts leadership team met again. We analyzed the data. We conveyed a bigger group, which we called the study team, and they identified and set goals based on that data and the research that we had put together. We had also collected several potential pilot companies that had given us information, and we had them analyze that as well. In winter of 2018, the study team identified the goals and the vision that we had for the curriculum. The task force reported all the data that they have collected in the research. In the spring of 2019, the study team attended to learn more about the potential pilots. We identified potential pilots for elementary from their, we had them fill out an application where grade level teams volunteered to pilot and committed to do this together for a period of six to eight weeks. And with that, the two, we ended up with three pilot curriculums, but one of them decided to step back, and so we ended up with two. And we identified the teachers, we ordered the materials for the pilot. And in the summer, we updated the pilot teacher list, we ordered more materials, and we had a one-day training with McGrath Hill and American Learning Company. In fall of 2019, 61 classrooms began piloting the materials, starting from like about late September to early November. Each of the pilots, the grade level pilot groups had coaches that came from American Learning Company, McGrath Hill, who led professional community, PLCs, professional learning communities with them, and also follow-up with coaching, observations, modeling. And we did this a couple of times. Then we conveyed as a leadership team again. We reviewed their feedback, we looked at the process, and in the middle of the pilot, we gathered all the pilot teachers, and they came and gave us more feedback. They went back and assessed the students, and we did a debrief at the end. And based on that debrief, then we began to plan these community open houses for teachers and the community to come and check out the materials and actually speak to the teachers who piloted the materials. On December 17th, we had a study team meeting, and we reviewed all the feedback and the data from our pilot teachers. We opened up a window, and we're all licensed staff, were able to inform the decision and what curriculum we wanted to recommend. We negotiated a package and pricing in February 2019, and here we are, March 2019, sinking port of all. I'm gonna have now Francesca continue with the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. So just to go a little bit back in time, when we set up all of the rules and how we were gonna look at any of the language arts adoption, we came up with five guiding principles, and these guiding principles were set up based on what we heard from the community, our community partners, what teachers were saying, what parents were saying through our CCAC and just all encompassing, and what our teachers and students wanted and needed in order for it. So our goal was 100% of students will be college, accredited college ready and committed to standards-based literacy curriculum and supporting pedagogy. And along with that, it focused on five areas. So when we sent any of our applications out, So when we sent any of our applications out, if we sent, when we sent things like our surveys, they were all tied to these five guiding principles. The first one talks about cultural relevancy and multilingualism, multiculturalism, and biliteracy. The second area was on engagement and empowering our students through rigorous activities and learning. The third is differentiated and personalized, and so that really talked to meeting our students at varied levels, but in the same vein, talking about how we needed it to be tied to our state standards. And number four was incorporating relevant technology to promote 21st century learning. And then the final one supports various modalities, so that's reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And so whenever we focused on any of our surveys, any of our professional development, we tied it back to these five guiding principles that were collaboratively discussed. And so we took several different quantitative and qualitative data with the two programs that we ended up piloting. And so the quantitative data, we took different things like they had beginning of the year DRA-ADL testing. We used ERLINE now, which was run through American Reading Company. We used different, like our DRA, our STAR and IRENA, which are computer, the DRA is not computer-based, but the STAR and IRENA are computer-based adaptive diagnostic style of testing. And then we also used some qualitative data where we looked at the feedback and surveys that teachers had completed for us so that we could have all of this to make a concise, but yet collaborative decision on which one we would move forward with. As Arsema mentioned, we had 61 classroom pilots. This wasn't initially, when we went into the summer and then Arsema and I started planning, we noticed there were some areas that weren't represented. There wasn't enough, let's just say, for example, primary dual-language schools, or some of our upper were only at some of our more fluid schools. And so we wanted to get them into different theaters. And so these 61 pilot classrooms were both for American Reading Company and for McGraw-Hill, Wonders, Maravillas. And we did it at 14 of our 25 schools in all grade levels. And then we came together, and that was one of the big days when we came together. We really had had all of our piloting schools represented. And it was really, it was an amazing day because everybody really felt passionate about what they were doing and what was necessary for our students aligned with our guiding principles. This was the part that we were going to have a couple of our teachers share their experience with McGraw-Hill. But the pictures speak for themselves of how engaged they were on that day. We ended up having a series of multiple meetings after that with different leadership teams as well as the pilot schools because it spun such a rich conversation that we wanted to make sure everybody's voices were heard. And so then finally, when we put it out to our, we did it on that day on the December 17th, but also when we talked in January with all of our schools. And all of our schools participated in an online survey where they were able to access different videos from both of the companies. And then tied to each one of the five guiding principles or five goals, we gave them definitions of when you look at it, does it, is this defined in this area? Can you see cultural relevancy? Is it rigorous? Is it equitable and accessible to all? And we tried to be whole true to the goals and the guiding principles that were set, but also have a voice for everybody in a collaborative spirit.
Thank you, Fred. So then we came down to a comparison, very much head-to-head, between McGraw-Hill's, Maravillas, and Wonders and American Reading Company. And you can see that we analyzed the strengths and where we did meet in the five categories of our rubric, and then what would be needed as supplemental, and what would the cost of that be? So the Package 1 is essentially a Maravillas and Wonders plus, and Package 2 was an ARC plus. And really, at the end of the day, one of the decision points was that the ARC package became pretty cost prohibitive compared to what we were able to accomplish with McGraw-Hill. You can see an analysis also categorically of where we had question marks. In some categories, these became red boxes. Clearly, we didn't have the, for example, the 21st century digital literacy component that we were looking for with American Reading Company. And so as we talked through our process with the piloting teachers, we recognized that the materials that you piloted tended to become materials that you were fond of. Both of these companies have great products, but the product that met HSD's goals most completely and for a better cost was McGraw-Hill, Maravillas, and Wonders. We took our proposal to the CCAC. They had visited classrooms and heard from teachers. And we have a video clip tonight that I'm going to try to play from Rebecca Nelson, who is the chair of the CCAC, participating via her smartphone.
Hi, this is Rebecca Nelson from CCAC, and I'm here to talk to you a little bit about the CCAC's interaction with the Language Arts Adoption Study. Linda Ossina and I actually have the honor of sitting.
Hi, this is Rebecca Nelson from CCAC. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about the change in the interaction of with the Language Arts Adoption, choosing the right curriculum for students. Just personally, I have to say it was such an honor to be included in this meeting. And when you get to sit there and you witness how important this is to the teachers and just their passion and the way that they look at the curriculum and done, it is just so exciting, and I am so proud to be a part of this for this school district. In addition to this initial meeting, our members were able to listen to publisher presentations. We were able to go visit classrooms piloting the program, look at the materials at the open house, and hear from our teachers in the district during our CCAC meetings. Some concerns that were important to us were making sure that there is a good language support for our students, both in English and Spanish and other languages we might not have thought about, that there are at-home materials so that the learning can continue at home, and what type of supports there are for our students on IEPs or tag identifying. Both ARC and McGraw-Hill were, just have amazing materials. ARC, we thought, had a little bit more, you know, variety of materials, and we thought obviously that that was going to be ahead. But when you looked at it, they were both pretty apart. We had no idea how the decision was going to be made. When we were presented with McGraw-Hill, we did acknowledge that there were better technical supports and better scaffolds that were built in for our teachers to be able to present the material in a variety of ways. When we asked to vote, CCAC voted unanimously 12 to 0 to present the material to you today, and I think that you'll be very pleased with what you find.
All right. So thanks to Rebecca and the members of the Community Curriculum Advisory Committee. They put hours of work into understanding our proposal as well. It's easy to focus on the materials piece of a curriculum adoption, but I want the board to understand too how much work has gone into understanding the needs of our teachers and the materials they need to serve our students well, as well as professional learning. These graphics show a poll and some quotes from our surveys of our teachers regarding the need for texts, language scaffolds, DOK and rigorous materials, and interventions for students. And you can see how teachers ranked those in importance from one being the most important to four being less important for them. We also, we used our data tools to gather by years of experience, what our teachers needed. And you can see here in colorful stacks, the light orange are teachers who've taught for zero to one years. The dark orange is teachers who have five to nine years' experience. The pink is two to four years of experience, et cetera, et cetera. And you can see that in categories along the bottom with foundational skills, culturally responsive teaching tools and interventions. By years of experience, what the needs of our teachers are so that we can differentiate. One place we know for sure is that our newer teachers have asked us for more support with foundational skills, materials, and intervention tools. So we're going to meet that need in our professional learning plan. I wanted to show the board that in this site, which this image itself is a hyperlink, you can get into our website and see the executive summary. You just click on the bar here, and this link takes you to the, all the archives of our process. Just wanted to show you a couple of things you could find here. So here are images we took two years ago when we met at South Meadows. These are teachers from Liberty High School and students that they brought to that kickoff meeting. These are teachers collaborating, developing our goals and our vision. We even did some outdoor equity-based activities to talk about the different students we have in our district, their unique needs, and how this Language Arts Adoption was going to meet those needs. So these are just things that the board can explore in your own time and ask questions about as you dig deeper into our process. We felt like being increasingly transparent from the very beginning with images and documents was going to be important for building confidence around our proposal. So with that, Kelly, can you bring it back to the PowerPoint? I think the last slide just says questions. So happy again to have questions at this time. I do want to appreciate one more time Francesca and Arsema, their leadership, and everybody else who participated in the process. We are available for questions in the next three or four weeks before the meeting in April.
Do we have any questions from our online board members?
This is Andrew. Not necessarily, not necessarily questions more so just comments. Really made the appreciation to Travis and the CCAC and the teachers who piloted through this. I went to the work, the open house at the Brooklyn Library, and they had a lot of their texts out for people to see. They were really not just culturally diverse. I mean, the texts weren't just written by white men. But they were also really relevant to the experiences that we as Generation Z and the next generation lived through, have been living through, and will with through as well. Also, the teachers that were there were really, really excited about this new curriculum. And also, the presenters from Wonders, really, they treated me like a community member. It wasn't just a student who knew nothing about what I was talking about, but they actually valued my opinions. They actually answered my questions. So as a high school student, I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
This is Sheen. I also have just a comment. I just really appreciate how thorough and comprehensive this whole process has been. And the CCAC and the teachers, I had an opportunity to serve on the CCAC during the midway point of the Language Arts Adoption process. And so it's really cool to come full circle and be able to see it being implemented even in the pilot programs and schools. I was able to see a couple of teachers at different grade levels implementing this curriculum. And I loved how dynamic it was and how engaging it was for the students in the classrooms. So I just want to commend Travis and your team for leading out on such a comprehensive process for this adoption.
Thank you, Sheen.
Okay, seeing no more comments, I just also want to echo that and thank you for this thorough work in Arsema and Fred. Thank you for staying and joining us and sharing all that information. I'm just so happy to see all the engagement from our teachers, our parents, our students, and how well they were received in those spaces and their contributions acknowledged and acknowledged. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Berber.
Our next item on our agenda is policies first read.
All right, you have before you the last batch of policies that will allow us to complete the comprehensive policy review that we've been engaged with since 2002, for the last year or so. And what we had done this time around, and because there are so many policies, we went ahead and we listed the staff members' names who is shepherding these policies through so that in the event that you do have questions over the next 30 days, that you will have the person that you can reach out directly to and ask any question. Is there any questions I can answer on the policies or the process that we moved at this time? We're basically putting them on 30-day review. Any questions that you have, please reach out to the staff member that is attached to each policy.
Okay, seeing no questions, fine. I'm moving on to the next items of information on administrative regulations update.
Correct. Okay, same format here. We have information. As you know, some of the ARs that are required for a district, they're not required to have board action necessarily. But we did want to provide you with the ARs that are being updated or recommendation for deletion. And I wanted to share that information with you so that you can also reach out to the board member and get specific information.
Is there any questions online on this item? Okay, we are moving on to our next item, which for tonight, we normally have our ATU and our HDA partners come and speak to the board. Tonight, they're not going to be reporting. So our next item is our discussion time, and we have our student representatives first. If there's any comments from our student representatives.
This is Andrew. So I guess I'll start this off. My heart goes out to all of the Blanco students, especially, but all the students in the district that have been impacted by the closures, cancellations, and post-pandemic events due to COVID-19. I know at Blanco, we've had, our dance team was days away from going to the state championships, and that was canceled. Our Shockwave Robotics team had a major event that would be Saturday, the last Saturday at Wilsonville that was canceled. Our first Latin dance was canceled, and many other things in that area were canceled. Our choir concerts were canceled. So really, it's been a lot of, or been a time for a lot of discussion, a lot of being unsure of what will happen in the future. But I'm confident with us having the community we have of being persistent and being there for one another that will all be able to make it through. There have been a lot of memes and social media-related things lately about just making sort of light of the situation. It's obviously a heavy topic in the fact that we have thousands of people who are white dying from the virus. But some of the cultural shifts, some of the sort of relatability moments of, you know, staying home in isolation, whether you're self-quarantine or not, just being able to sort of find some sort of goodness in the situation is something that I've really enjoyed from my fellow students and constituents. I'm not sure what will happen in the future, but we'll definitely stay tuned and see what happens. When life gives you lemons, you, I'd say squeezing in people's eyes, but I guess that, I shouldn't believe, say that final, like, being in board meeting. I don't endorse any violence.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have any other student reps online?
Sorry, I'm trying to figure out how to, all right. It's Danny. And I've been in my house. I know PCC for all the early college students are doing online. For, I took all my finals online. I know a lot of my classmates are taking their finals online. I think we're online as of yesterday, the first three weeks of spring term are going to be online. And then other than that, I think it's just really important to remember how hard it is for a lot of our students and to spare time, you know, nobody's sure of anything, but especially for some of our seniors. I've been just hearing a lot of, like, worrying panic over whether or not graduation's happening and a lot of things. So I think it's just important to remember that, like, especially school board members, whatever you say, people are listening and, you know, just taking that moment to sort of make a conscious effort to dissuade fear and, like, watch out.
Thank you. Is the radio online? Just double checking.
Yes, I am. Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
So Andrew, I agree with Andrew. I agree with Danny. A lot of chaos is going on around, and a lot of people are talking. And Danny is right, people are listening because people are very scared right now, and so they don't know who to rely on. But I had three questions, and I don't know if I should ask them right now or send them through email or...
Whatever you prefer, if it's... Whatever you prefer, if it's...
Okay, well, they're kind of quick and they were about the coronavirus update. So I don't know if you guys had mentioned them or answered them, but I couldn't really hear in the beginning and that's when you guys addressed the update. So the first one is, you guys were talking about the internet access and like wifi and hotspots, right? In the beginning?
Yeah.
Distance learning, yes.
So I didn't really hear or know if you guys said anything about how students would get them if some cannot access like, or go to school? If it would be like a physical hotspot or how would it be if it's like wireless network?
Maria, if you just go ahead and run through all of your questions and I'll answer them all one time for you.
Oh, okay. So the second one is, you had mentioned that all the principals are meeting in order to like push through to make sure that the seniors are going to graduate. And so I don't know if that only applied to education related, like with credits and stuff like that. I was, like, I wanted to know if it included like our fees? Because we do have to have a clear account before we walk, if we're going to walk or graduate. And so I know that we can do it online, but if those, there are students who don't have access to the internet or don't actually know that this could be done online, how will we get to them? And the third one is regarding the school lunches. I had heard or seen that school lunches were being given free to kids between ages one through 18 in some of our elementary schools. And because some kids rely on school lunch and now school is being closed till April, will we keep doing that if we're the ones providing those lunches? Or if we're not providing the lunches, are we going to or can we do anything to help those kids get food?
Thank you, Maria.
Okay, thank you. Let me, do you want me to just roll into my time as well?
Yeah, we'll roll into superintendent's time so that Mike can answer your questions and then we'll move on to the board discussion after that.
All right, let me start with Maria's questions, great questions. The hotspots, we right now are exploring what it would cost us to provide the hotspots to those students who already don't, who don't have connectivity. We anticipate, we estimate that 20% of our students do not have connectivity. And in order to provide hotspots, it is, if that were to extend into a two-month period, for example, that would be a couple hundred thousand dollars or well over a hundred thousand dollars, I should say, in order to provide that. And we've not ruled that out yet. Where we are is we're in a, we're in a situation where we're working with the other districts of Washington County to determine what the best hybrid approach is for distance learning. So that could be a combination of online learning coupled with paper packets or assignments or resources that are provided to students. So there's more to come on that information, on that particular topic. And we, we do have 10 days worth of, by the time the students were supposed to return on April 1st, we had 10 days worth of learning activities put together or supplemental activities, I should say, put together. And we'll be ready to go with those for sure. We're now, we're now focused on addressing the needs for the, for the extended closure that we just found out about this evening. So continue to explore that in partnership with other Washington County, being mindful of being able to provide experience for our students that do have connectivity as well as our students that do not. When it comes to the, this senior graduation and the fees, that is not something that we've even talked about yet. Remember that we were originally anticipating a one-week additional closure in addition to, in addition to spring break. And now that that's been extended, we will begin to look at some of those other things. And I've taken a note and I'll work with Dale and the principals on that because we just don't have an answer for that yet. And Maria, remind me what your third question was? School lunches?
That was about the, because I had heard about school lunches being, well, meals being provided to students between one years old and like 18 years old at some of our elementary schools. And I had said that because some kids rely on school lunch and now school will be closed until April, will we keep doing that? Are we the ones responsible for that, providing the lunches? Or if we're not, we're not the ones providing the lunches, are we going to do something about it or can we do something about it to help these key kids from, like, get food?
Absolutely, and I appreciate that you're thinking about that. We are the people that are providing lunches for, for the students. Yesterday, we served 400 lunches to students. Today, we serve 2,000 lunches to students. So a pretty major increase as word of mouth and as we've been able to get additional communication pathways out there. Today, we sent a robocall to our families and let them know where, let them know that lunches were going to be being served. We are going to continue that, continue that through the, as long as school is closed, we will continue to do that. Following spring break, we are going to be using our school buses to expand the number of locations where that distribution can take place. So we, we expect that the number of students accessing the lunches that we're providing will continue to increase.
Okay, that's super cool. Okay, thank you.
And just to, just to finish up my time, we've been working with HGA and HCU. This is obviously an unprecedented time for all of us. And, and the team that we have working on a variety of different topics, I'm just really thankful for. We've had conversations with HCU about what their, what their work time is going to look like. As, as I've said before, we are working to make sure that staff members are paid throughout this closure and we're working on what that, what those work, what the work time, what the makeup of that work time actually looks like. We're also working with our licensed union. They are in the process of assisting for those supplemental learning activities and will now move into a longer-term solution to that. So just I've really appreciated the, the partnership that we have with that. Would that all wrap up, wrap it up?
Thanks, Mary. Okay, I'm going to do robocall for our board members online so that we can do board director's time. So I will start with Lisa.
Hello. I don't really have a lot, just, I'll just share what I shared with Mike earlier. I really appreciate how quickly the news were it to be rolled out and the communication for families on that. As a parent, I've gotten communication in several different ways about that. And also, interestingly, it's personal message for families. So it says, you know, the communication says, okay, well, lunch and food is available and here is the location closest to you. So it's not, it's, it's not general to everyone, it's specific for each family, which is really interesting. And I, I just really appreciate that resource. And I know that we were ahead of the curve in planning for that. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to the staff. I know how much time that probably took and I appreciate that very much. So I know that we're going to get through this together, you guys. And, and I'm just happy and grateful that we have such a great leadership team to stewardship during this time. So appreciate you all very much.
Thank you, Lisa. Jackie?
Yes, I had one question about the wifi for distance learning. Comcast has rolled out a free wifi for people as the students during this time. So I'm just going to assume that we're looking into that as well. And basically, I just wanted to say, kind of quote Mr. Rogers who said, you know, when things are scary and especially in the news, look for the helpers because you'll always find people who are helping. And I, I want to thank all of our school district helpers who are providing and who are out there, you know, making sure our kids are eating and have education tools at their disposal. Our administrators, I can't, like Lisa said, we have a great team steering the ship and I could not be more happy with what we are doing. And a big shout out to Beth. Thank you for all of the great communications that you send out and I'm sure all of the emails that you're fielding as well. I just want the public to know that we are doing everything we can to make sure that our kids graduate on time and have what they need to finish the school year on a positive note.
Thank you, Jackie. Sheen?
Yeah, I also just wanted to, to give Mike and the team just such a huge shout out, especially with the fastly evolving nature of what the situation is. I think that, Mike, you've done such an incredible job at, at keeping us all informed and making sure that our families and students are getting the communication support that they need. So I just want to publicly thank you. And yes, we will, we will walk through this together.
Thank you, Sheen. Martin?
Thank you for coming away from a retreat. I know that was my plan, but it was wisely, we put down on that. Thank you very much. And it's one of the stories, everything that has been said already. A great, great job from my team and to my colleagues. I've heard everything that they have said. It's a time of trial and I'm very pleased to do what we can to meet the needs of the community.
Thank you, Martin. Mark?
Yeah, just, you know, kudos to everyone for spring action from Beth's team all the way down to Nutrition Services. And they said that, you know, the, the fact that we were able to get lunches out the first day of this and, you know, even more so today. I, I hope people, you know, that indicates that, that we're on it. I mean, we're in the very outset of a national health crisis and I sort of feel like there's new information every 12 hours. And all we can do is make the best decision with the information we have at that moment. And I think that's, you know, listening to our experts and taking their recommendations to heart and figure out what works best for our district. I think we're doing a very good job with that, so well done, everybody. Question, a couple of questions. Maria mentioned, I didn't see the communication through 18. I'm guessing seniors that have turned 18 can still get a lunch, or is that not a thing?
Yeah, all of, all students can get a lunch.
Okay. It looks like the facilities will still be closed the day we have our next full board meeting session. Are we working on a way for HGA and HCU to participate in that in a way they weren't able to tonight?
Yeah, we certainly will.
All right. And yeah, I guess just, yeah, everybody, keep up the great work. And, you know, it is the, the very outset. I think, you know, we learn more literally every 12 hours. So just be prepared to try to be flexible and practice social distancing. And some of you may know that I, I myself am on a little self-quarantine thing going on down here myself. So the, the best thing to do is stay away from people. It feels weird in our social age, but it's really the best thing we can do right now.
Thank you, Martin. Edira?
I don't have much either, just echoing what the other board members said. Really appreciative of the team that we have here at HSB. I think our response to this ongoing crisis that keeps changing hour by hour has been spot on. And, you know, I just want to remind people to be kind to each other, you know? We do have to practice social distancing, but remember to call people, say, how are you doing? And offer to help your neighbors if needed, you know? Because that's the only way that we're going to get through this is together.
Thank you, Edira. With that, I just, again, I can't speak enough for just how responsive and awesome our leadership at HSB has been in keeping the board up to date as information changes. And we are really dealing with an unprecedented event and we are trying to do the best that we can. As information comes in hour by hour and it changes. And I think us being able to be flexible, also working with our experts in our community, our healthcare experts, and also partnering with our other school districts. We're not doing this alone. Everybody's going through this right now. And so the more that we can collaborate and be unified in how we deliver services, I think that it is going to be the marker for our success and how we move through this process and how we get to the end of the year with our students. So I just want to thank you, Mike, for the leadership again for just keeping us abreast of any changes that happen. And know that to all of our community members that are emailing us or checking us, we are putting information out as soon as we are getting it and trying to make sure that you are up to date with the changes that we have. But also knowing that we are trying to collaborate and align ourselves better with all of our partners, all of our other districts to make sure that we serve our community in the best way possible. So with that, I couldn't...
I do have another question, I just thought of my other question, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, you want to raise the gallows?
Don't worry, it's okay.
I know, I know we're going to try to bail ourselves of all the resources that are being made available naturally. We're not alone in this. Mobilizing the resources of all of Washington County, all of the state, all of the country. To Jackie's point, we know internet providers are providing service to people. Like, many companies are mobilizing solutions. I know we're bailing ourselves of those. When it comes to, so if it's just a month, if it's just April, we look at the 200,000 number, the Jordan quote or whatever. When it comes to offsetting the costs of what it takes to make distance a reality in our district...
Mark, we lost you.
Lost me? Am I there?
We lost the last bit of that, when it comes to the...
When it comes, so when it comes to the cost of what it takes to make distance learning a thing in our district, a reality in our district, is there any benefit to be gained financially from the buildings being closed? Or do they just cost what they cost?
Oh, I see. So 84% of our budget is spent on salary benefits. And because we have provisions in our contract and because we have staff members still reporting and the expectation is going to be that they continue to provide for our students, we are, we are not saving a great deal. We, we may be saving some on our transportation costs. We may be saving some on utilities and that kind of thing. But such a high percentage of our budget is spent on salary and benefits that there won't be a huge savings. Michelle, anything to add to that?
Probably our biggest area of savings is going to be on substitute staff.
If you didn't hear, the, the biggest area of savings will likely be on substitute staff.
And I know that Jordan was looking at getting devices. If we're closed for a month, is there, is there, could we, you know, break down a cart and distribute those devices? Or is that not, do we have to get new devices for people?
No, Mark, you're exactly right. That is exactly what we would do. And, and we had, we had a number of our high school teachers that were doing just that. They've distributed some of the machines out of the carts and essentially checked them out to students. The bigger barrier for us right now is the, the connectivity. We can, we could pull machines out of carts and we can have them available to students. And, you know, we can set a time where they come by or we can, you know, we can take them out to locations. It really is the connectivity piece that we're working at, we're working on. Jordan continues to explore that and we have another meeting tomorrow at 9:30 to continue a conversation on that. There's, there's questions around the Comcast offer that's out there. Is that providing a MiFi or is that providing connectivity to the home? And, you know, us trying to manage getting a home connected to the internet is a little bit out of our scope. So we, we're going, we're going to continue that conversation tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
If I could, as, as long as I'm talking here, if I could just say, I'd, I'd like to thank all of Cabinet as well as, we've been referring to it as Expanded Cabinet, whether the entire administrative team, in particular Cabinet, has been available seven days a week. And I cannot tell you how many conversations we've had late at night and early in the morning. And it really has just been a non-stop effort for the last two weeks. So thanks to all of Cabinet for your just commitment to doing whatever we can to make our, our students instructional experience as positive as it can be during this extraordinary time. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mike. You guys can't see their bags under their eyes. I'll tell you that, they've been on. So thank you all. With that, we'll conclude our board meeting.